Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we would, start with the opening prayer and then pledge allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thank you, my son. Forgive us, O God, our trespassing brethren; for we have sinned and sinned against you. We remember your presence when we are in sin. Your love is everlasting, and everlasting is with us. Oh, whoever, amen. The United States of America and its republic, which is theirs, on nation, on land, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everyone to comply with our CDC guidelines and wear your mask. If you become muffled, feel free to take your mask off while you're speaking, but make sure you're within the social distancing guidelines. Ms. Ackley wanted me to let everyone know that she had a mild procedure done today and she wouldn't be able to attend, so she sent a doctor's note, so she'll get an excused absence for that. This time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion, need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Okay, at this time, we have a proclamation for the National Federation of Blind for White Cane Day. And if you would like to meet me at the podium. A little bit of a distance. How's everybody?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, today is White Cane Awareness Day. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen has the right to carry, symbolizes the ability to achieve independence and makes it possible for the blind to move about freely and safely and fully participate in and contribute to our society and live the lives that they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires motorists and cyclists to use caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Maryland law calls upon employers to utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of Maryland, through public agencies and with assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland, should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Executive do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2020, as White Cane Awareness Day in Wycomico County and call upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for the blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. Done this day, October 6th, of 2020, and signed by the Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Executive, John Posoda. And Ms. Ackley's not here, so what we're going to do is get her to sign it and then we'll get it to you.
Okay.
So, thank you, everybody. Does anybody want to say anything?
I'd like to localize that if we could.
Come right here.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council. It's great to be here, I'm smiling. So, thank you. My name is Timothy Mayer and I'm a resident of Council District Number 4, so shout out to Mr. Hastings over there, thank you very much. And with me tonight is Amy Kraus, she's a board member, and Virginia Bender, who is the vice president. So here specifically, we have a chapter on the eastern shore of Maryland for all nine counties here on the shore. And we meet here in Salisbury once a month on a formal basis for blind individuals that live here in the community. And we are advocate for those individuals and work with agencies that then therefore try to provide services, whether it's in the school system, whether it's in employment, whether it's in housing, whether it's in accommodation, whether it's in transportation, whether it's in accessibility. So, those are the kinds of things that we work on and try to make being a blind person just like any other sighted person here living on the eastern shore of Maryland. And in the state of Maryland, we have an affiliate, so that is why you hear the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland. But we do have our localized chapter. And so, we are happy and thankful very much for the recognition and certainly encourage the public, when you see somebody with a white cane, certainly say hello, say hello first, because we may not be able to say hello, which you can imagine. And especially if you're with children, a lot of times, children have questions, why is that person, what is that person doing? And we love to answer those questions, because that's how we create better awareness in the community. So with that, unless you all have anything else you'd like to say?
Just an appreciation for the proclamation.
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you to Laura also for administratively kind of making that happen behind the scenes, we greatly appreciate it. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Taylor, it's your floor.
Good evening. There are two bills tonight. The first is a public hearing on legislative bill 2020-11, which is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland, to borrow on the faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $16,437,654 and to evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county. I see, I don't think Mr. Posoda is here, but this has already been introduced at the last meeting, I believe.
That's correct.
And so this is public hearing and second reading. If you want me to, I can finalize the $16 million amount as to the various purposes for which it would be borrowed.
Does anyone need Mr. Taylor to go over that? No, that's fine. Okay, this time, we can open the floor to the public hearing for legislative bill number 2020-11, as 2020-11 only. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, we're going to close the floor to this public hearing. Need a motion to approve legislative bill 2020-11?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd make one comment.
Yes, Mr. Cannon.
Yes. I'm glad to see these projects finally moving forward. I think that's very important for the county.
Yes, sir.
And for those individual agencies and organizations, departments that are responsible benefiting from this funding. But I think we should, as we move forward, and I would stress this to the Acton County Executive, John Posoda, that we need to be very careful as we move forward, because commitments in this year or this next year of the actual funding could overobligate us to unsustainable obligations in the future. And I think we need to pay very careful attention to that. I know that Mr. Taylor has also reviewed very carefully what the out-trending obligations just might be in some of these projects. And I know we had these conversations with Mr. Strousberg last year. So I would just want to reiterate, especially in the economic state that we're in right now, that if we're going to commit $2 million to a project or $4 million to a project, to be very certain that in the long term, it's been very carefully vetted, that we will be able to sustain that project over the next four, five, 10, or 15 years as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Mr. Holloway?
Yes, I'll follow up with what John said on, if you watch what's going on at state level, I think we do need to be cautious where our spending heads us in the next year or so. It's a lot of concern up there, so, thank you.
Very good points there, Mr. Holloway and Mr. Cannon. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, this time, we're going to have a roll call. Vice President Cannon. Mr. Hastings. Ms. Ackley's not here. Mr. Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McCain.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The bill passes with six ayes. All right, Mr. Taylor.
The second item tonight is for introduction legislative bill number 2020-12, an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning. Section 225-67, Table of Permitted Uses, to add marine supplies, boats, or equipment sales, service, and repair as a permitted use in the table of permitted uses for the light industrial district, and that's Paran I-1, the I-1 district. And I don't know if Gloria Smith is here, yes she is.
Yes, she is.
Yep.
Okay. Are you done, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Right, need a motion to introduce legislative bill 2020-12.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of introducing legislative bill 2020-12, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Harley?
We can have the public hearing for this bill on November 3rd at 6:00 p.m.
November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Okay. All right, now you have the floor, Ms. Harley.
Okay, so good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Ashley Teagle, the executive director of the Wycomico County Public Libraries on their COVID-19 reopening plan.
Welcome, Ms. Teagle.
Thank you. Hello. All right, so I will try to keep this brief. The handouts that are coming around, one, I just wanted to clear up some misinformation, because while our buildings have been closed to the public, the library has very much so been offering services, even though the buildings have not remained open. So this document just gives a quick overview of that. While our buildings have remained closed to the public from March 17th, 2020 until this point, our staff has been working tirelessly to create and maintain services such as curbside pickup for library items, virtual programming, and offering virtual reference assistance via email and by phone. These services have supplemented our existing collection of digital resources. Library staff have been busy preparing our buildings for reopening to the community. This has required the library's management team to work with our IT department and maintenance staff to reconfigure our physical space. We have updated our cleaning procedures to include more frequent sanitizing. We have had to adapt our procedures for materials handling in accordance to guidance from the State Library Resource Center. Wycomico Public Library staff have continued to work hard on behalf of our community during COVID. We are the recipient of an Institute of Museum and Library Services CARES Act grant. This funding will allow the library to offer additional hotspots and laptops for customers to take home and to stay connected during the pandemic. We have seen increased engagement and participation from our community and library programs. More library customers have been able to take advantage of our online resources throughout the pandemic. There have been more successes than failures for Wycomico Public Libraries during the pandemic. We have demonstrated our ability to be responsive to community needs while adhering to strict health and safety recommendations. We have established the library as a reputable resource for information during these challenging times. And at the bottom, just briefly, some statistics. So, from the end of May 2020 to the end of September, we have had 3,666 curbside materials appointments. 1,757 customers have attended our virtual programs, again, for that same period. And between March 2020 and October 2020, information staff have answered 116 reference questions. The next handout, which is folded in half for you, this is what customers receive when they schedule a curbside pickup appointment. We've switched to doing a monthly calendar of events. And this issue, since we are reopening the branches this month, includes some details for our customers about those plans. And then finally, I believe you should have already the information that is posted on our website. So, Pittsville and Center Branch actually are already open and accepting appointments for customers. The Downtown Library will be the last branch to reopen as of October 13th. And so, we just did an FAQ, which I hope addresses the community's questions. We did take a number of steps to prepare our buildings, including installing Plexiglas shields at all of our service locations. We have floor decals and signage advising people to remain physically distant. And we continue to offer these virtual services to try to limit how many customers are in our buildings at a time to prevent the spread. So if we can help you by phone or email, we will continue to do that. So, the appointment hours are listed, I believe it should be page 2 of your document, so Center Branch is Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 3. And again, this is referring to appointments only. Downtown Branch is Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the Pittsville Branch is Tuesday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So basically, customers just need to call the branch that they're interested in visiting to schedule their appointment. We are starting out with 45-minute sessions, and that will be an opportunity for customers to do whatever library business during that time. That will include if you need to send a fax, if you need a document notarized, if you need to make photocopies. Excuse me, and again, to reiterate, we will be cleaning the computer areas frequently, and we have obtained a supply of hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies to sanitize. Now, there is an ongoing study, I just wanted to preface the part about books to go. And what is not clear at this time is exactly how transmissible the virus is through handling library materials. So we have always erred on the side of caution. As of the fourth round of this study, which is being done, I believe by the Institute of Museum and Library Services, they were up to six days of realizing the virus still lived on common library material surfaces. So when materials are returned to us, we are quarantining for seven business days, not penalizing our customers with overdue fees to let that virus die on those materials. When customers are allowed to come into the building, we will not be allowing browsing to reduce handling of the collection, because if someone touches a book, we have to quarantine it. And so to keep books in circulation, at this point of our plan, we will not be having people browse the stacks. However, you can get personalized book recommendations by calling your library or emailing us. And of course, we have a very robust online catalog where people can search for materials. Let's see, just making sure I hit all the high points. We're still not able to accept donations. Again, that has to do with the fact that at this point in time, we have not recalled our volunteers back to the library, and also just because we are having to quarantine materials. And let's see what else I've got here. In-person programs are still on pause, and that is in line with pretty much everyone across the state. I will say that programs like Project Read that are done on a one-on-one basis, that can be done in an isolated meeting room, will resume on a limited capacity in Phase 3. Similarly, our Job Search Center staff have discussed introducing some limited one-on-one appointments to help people that need assistance applying for jobs at this time. And so, down at the bottom of our plan are all the various extensions that you can contact to get assistance from library staff. New in Phase 3 will be virtual reference appointments, so we do have Zoom accounts where we are willing to actually video conference with staff, where we can do some screen sharing to show how to use some of our online resources. And that concludes our plan. I mean, we remain flexible, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Teagle. Do we have any questions? Mr. Holloway?
During the shutdown, did you experience any layoffs or furloughs?
We have frozen hiring, so we did actually have some employees that... We've frozen hiring, so if we've had employees that have left their positions, we have not filled them. But we did not have to eliminate positions at this time.
So how many employees are you down now compared to where you were before the pandemic hit?
Before the pandemic? I'll have to get back to you on that number. I know we've lost at least a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Cannon? Mr. Hastings?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just be brief. First of all, you know, the Wycomico libraries are a wonderful asset to the community. I say that again and again. It's really good to see the numbers there, 3,700 curbside pickups, more than, what, 1,800 attendees for virtual programs. Recently, I discovered the Hoopla app, which is also... I don't know if you... I can say what it is if anyone doesn't know, but that's an app that you can access library resources through your phone, and it's a national app. You just have to find your... Just say that you're a local member and show your Wycomico, or whatever library you are, show your ID and your number. So that was really neat that I've discovered that lately. I did want to ask, I had a couple of quick questions. I saw that you were leaving, and I was kind of bummed to hear that, to put it lightly. I didn't know if you'd want to explain a little bit of your thoughts on where you're going. You're an individual who is highly qualified and has, literally has all the credentials, the degrees, that you would want for this kind of a position. And I think whatever your reasons are, maybe it's a simple one, you know, maybe it's an easy one, maybe it's, I think, as you've read in media, you've alluded to the fact that there might be deeper reasons. I want to say it here and now, that I think we should, you know, be making sure that we're retaining and promoting individuals like yourself in these kinds of positions. And before you answer that question, I did want to go into basically the... I've also, I saw, I attended the, I think it was the May Library Board Meeting, in which case, we advanced members of that committee. We had, I guess when I was on the call on the part of the committee for that day, you had moved forward with a couple individuals who I don't believe, or at least one who has not been confirmed yet. And if, you know, if you have not been confirmed, which I'm not positive we have, I would love to know why. First part, leaving, second part, board members.
I appreciate the question, Mr. Hastings. I was going to ask our president if I could provide a formal resignation to the council.
You can, thank you.
And it is quite lengthy, so I'm just going to try to summarize this, but I wanted you to have a printed copy for your review. And I did want to read the quote that I start this letter with. "Unaddressed, the ruptures and diagonal cracks will not fix themselves. The toxins will not go away, but rather will spread, leach, and mutate as they already have. When people live in an old house, they come to adjust to the idiosyncrasies and outright danger skulking in an old structure. They put buckets under a wet ceiling, prop up groaning floors, learn to step over that rotting wood tread in the staircase. The awkward becomes acceptable and the unacceptable becomes merely inconvenient. Live with it long enough and the unthinkable becomes normal. Exposed over the generations, we learn to believe that the incomprehensible is the way that life is supposed to be." And that is a quote from Isabel Wilkerson's newest book, Cast: The Origins of Our Discontent. And so as I start out with the letter, absolutely, the relationship with the library and the local government is my number one reason for leaving my post. And of particular concern for me, one, the more that I learned about the county charter and the control that it gives the government over the library. I think that is very dangerous, because I think it gives the government a lot of control in what information the library is making accessible to the community. And I know I have personally received questions from members of this body about matters ranging from the library programs that we're offering to what grants that we are accepting. And again, it's just concerning. Similarly, I had a concerned council member question our process for selecting board members without knowing that the person they were trying to recommend to me actually made homophobic remarks in a private meeting with me. I just feel the county government needs to get out of the way and let the library director run the library along with the board of trustees. My second recommendation is engaging the library director in a positive relationship. I actually think this is the first time that I have formally addressed council. I do not recall making any budget presentations, talking to you directly about the capital improvement plan for the library. However, on the flip side of that, I have had a member of this body asked specifically for the library's budget, specifically asked how we spent our program budget, which I promptly furnished. And then at the very next council meeting, citizens came out to publicly ask to defund the library. And that did not instill in me a level of trust that the questions being asked of me were for innocent reasons. Furthermore, in a follow-up email related to budget requests, the email sent to me insinuated that somehow I was misleading information about how the library's budget was spent. The question surrounded my professional membership dues. I am a member of pretty much every professional organization related to public libraries, American Library Association, the Public Library Association, and I also participate in the Black Caucus of the American Library Association. To be clear, as I explained in writing to the person that asked, I pay for my own membership dues personally, and I was greatly offended that the way the question was worded insinuated that I was not being transparent with how the library's funds were being spent. Which brings me to, I also think the county council needs to be transparent. So again, I've had private conversation with more than one member of this body who has led me to believe that we came to a mutual understanding, and then there were follow-up public remarks that I felt kind of threw me under the bus. Fourth, I do not feel that the government should ever threaten the library's leadership. And that has happened in a private phone call with a member of this body who vowed to defund the library if we proceeded with a program. This is just an egregious abuse of power. I'm not even going to say anything else about it. I was greatly disturbed. And finally, and this is probably the most important to me, because I spend a lot of my professional energy outside of my official role as the public library director here on this issue. Libraries are for everyone who lives in the county, not just for those citizens that complain about what we are offering. I highly recommend that this council consider some equity, diversity, and inclusion training, and implement what is learned in those trainings into your work as council members. As the library's first black director, I have been appalled at the ignorance surrounding these topics by our elected officials. To me, there is a complete lack of awareness of the impacts of our county's racial past on current race relations. And I'll use the example of the Black History Month display at one of our branches. I shared with this body the story of how a customer came to our branch during Black History Month when we had a display up, and said, you know, this customer complained about all the black faces on the books. And at that time, there was a remark made in response, something to the effect of, well, that person's the exception, not the role. And I just want to be clear, that was the person that was comfortable saying it. I believe, based on my personal experience in this role, that there are others that feel that way. Similarly, relating to the controversy with our Pride Month programs, including the proposed Drag Queen Storytime, misinformation about the LGBTQ+ community created a hostile environment, not only for the partners who were going to present the story, but I also want to share for library staff. There is a blog that I'm sure we're all familiar with that called for me to resign, that called one of my staff members, I believe the term used was transvestite, it was disgusting. And so this rhetoric is very homophobic, and I feel like it is the example of why I feel it is so important that the library provide programs and services that meet the needs of our marginalized communities and also are designed to build greater understanding and awareness of those communities. I have an obligation to provide equitable library services that meet the needs of all of our community members. And members of this council have made remarks that I would consider homophobic and racist, especially as it concerns our library programs. You don't have to agree with your constituents' personal beliefs, but I do believe you need to respect them. And then my letter concludes just with some concerns about our funding, which this issue has predated me by two library directors. I repeatedly hear, and I know since our doors have been closed, community members saying, you know, we're a waste of tax dollars. And I just want to put out there that, number one, the library makes up less than 1% of the county's general fund revenue estimates for 2021. And then if you skip down a bit, I also shared some numbers about per capita spending. So, at $27.11 spent per capita on library services in the county, we are only ahead of Allegheny County at $26.60 per capita as far as public library spending. Now, in Allegheny's defense, their population is probably about 30,000 people less than ours, and I am aware that they lost a major employer that potentially impacted their tax revenue. Which now brings me to the facilities. Which now brings me to the facilities and the irony of my quote talking about a crumbling building. So in 2019, we celebrated 150 years of service to this community, and I just question, is there a historical value to us staying in this building since 1963? We have had a number of issues with this building. So we have pest issues, our electrical panels had to be completely replaced, thank you county for that, last year. But as we speak, when I come into my office, our fire alarm panel is beeping because it is at the end of its life. How is that acceptable and how is it safe, particularly when I'm fielding questions from the public about reopening the facilities? The center branch is a donated space. It costs the library nothing for the actual space. But there are other models, even in the state, take a look at Anna Rundle, who have an exceptional retail space library in their mall. I think that's the model we need to go for. Because our space is currently too small and because of COVID, operational shifts have made us remove the availability of that meeting room. So whenever we reopen, for as long as we have to work on this modified model, center branch no longer has a meeting room for the community. And lastly, the Pittsville branch was supposed to be an experiment. Fifteen years, we have been in a trailer, and without my input or consent, our previous county executive insisted on relocating that branch to an auto body shop. I'm not sure why we would make that investment, one, without talking to our citizens, because I think the folks of Pittsville would have liked working with a qualified public library facilities consultant in some focus groups to talk about what their needs are out of that building. And also, because by choosing that site, we were disqualified from state money. So Wycomico County qualifies for up to 86% of our project costs in state grant money. I know the person that coordinates this program, we've not gone for it, we're getting beat left and right. Whenever we put that grant in, I'm telling this body, we stand an excellent chance of getting it. So with that said, the county would still need to put in their 14%. I just feel it's time to make a sustainable investment in this library. I feel like I beg, and I beg, and I scrape, and I scratch. And just to conclude, a very successful colleague of mine who gets a lot of library projects done, once told me that a public library cannot be successful without the support of our government. And I know this is true. It's not realistic for it to be on library staff to fundraise, to get a whole new building, also to apply for grant money to support our programming and all of the other things that we need to do. We have public library staff who are award-winning. One of them, Ms. Bernadette Kennedy, is here today. She is the 2020 recipient for the Citizens for Maryland Library's Outstanding Employee of the Year Award. Our 2019 recipient was Cheryl Nardello. So our staff are being recognized at the state level for the great work that we're doing, and it would be wonderful to have that appreciated here locally by the county. So I'm proud of what I've been able to do. It's been a year and 10 months. We have a strategic plan. It's on our website. We did our 150th anniversary celebration. That was a fundraiser. We got board approval for our program policy. I worked with Senator Caroza and Delegate Anderton to get a $100,000 state bond bill towards the purchase of a new bookmobile. And we have prioritized getting our staff out into the community to meet our citizens where they are. I am less proud of the fact that the county government, and I'm a hometown girl, from Salisbury, Maryland, born and raised, graduated from Mardella High School, that has at times bullied me and attempted to intimidate me as I worked to serve the citizens of this county. And I will conclude with, perhaps if that same energy was put into selecting our next county executive, our county would be in much better shape. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tiggle. I think that I can say that the majority of the council members were not aware of some of the issues you brought up, but we'll be looking into it.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for your service, and I wish you the best.
And just a quick comment, Ms. Tiggle.
Mr. McCain.
Before you leave, I do want to thank you for your service to Wycomico County. You've served the county with integrity and professionalism, and I also admire your courage. That's a trait that, you know, we don't see enough of. So, but thank you very much for your service. And also regarding the, a new library, I served on the council back in 2006, 2010, Joe was on there, and John was on there. And at that point in time, the, actually, we had a task force and a study done for a new library. And the question was at that time, do we build at a new location?
Yep.
Or do we build at the, you know, basically refurbish the existing location?
Right.
And that task force decided, you know, keeping the library downtown was the best choice. And we actually had architectural drawings and plans for a new library, and if I remember correctly, I think it was part of our CIP budget in 2007 or 2008. Unfortunately, recession came.
Right.
And it kind of just, at that point, you know, it just didn't happen, along with a lot of other capital projects, but unfortunately, it's never been resurrected. So hopefully, that can be resurrected.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Mr. Cannon?
I would only add similar to what Councilman McCain has said. Very disappointed when I learned that you were leaving. I know when you first came in, you had some huge shoes to fill. It didn't take you long to figure out exactly what to do and to also, you know, take that same, take the reins and to really produce a very effective library for this community. And I really appreciated what you were doing. On the board, I saw the many emails that you had to send out to the library board to try to move the library forward, especially during the COVID issue, as far as you very quickly asked what needed to be done there, and we appreciate that as well. I would also apologize for the terrible miscommunication on the part of the council with the library and for any of the rogue attacks that you were subjected to. I really do apologize for that. I have had conversations more recently where, as a result of that, and in talking to board members more recently, I think the council, you're right, the council will need to try to evaluate how it addresses the library in particular.
Yes.
Whereas I think maybe we'll have to begin looking at discussions with the library, representative of maybe the president of the council, or through the board member who sits on the library board, the council member who sits on the library board. In that way, I think there's a greater representation for the council as a whole, as opposed to individual members that might be able to attack either you or the board members based on their individual perspective that may not represent this body as at all.
Right.
And most likely never had. So just wanted you to know that we are already looking to try to see how we can correct that. It may be that we do need a charter amendment. See, as the charter states, and you may already know this, the council as a whole cannot directly address department heads, because they want one person overseeing the departments, and that's the county executive. They don't want to have eight bosses. They want to have one. And that's, that only makes sense. It might be that even though the library isn't technically a department head, that we may have to treat the library in the same fashion, whereas council members, and I would be suggesting that we may restrict councils' access, but only for the benefit of the director. And that, in that situation where individual council members may want to have certain materials, well, they may just have to go through the council or the president, or maybe through the county executive, to try to address concerns with the library as a whole. So that being said, again, it's a lesson we're learning a little too late, and we're having to pay the price with you leaving, I think, all too early. I really was looking forward to what you were doing. How great you were, you were making things happen. So we'll miss you, and it's definitely, certainly going to be someone else's game. And we wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. And thank you again, Ms. Tiggle.
Thank you.
And we're still here if you need anything. Ms. Harley?
Okay, next on the agenda, this evening is Resolution Number 104-2020. This is extending the date for voting on Legislative Bill -2020-09. This bill proposes to prohibit unauthorized salary increases and to establish penalties, removal and liability provisions in Chapter 59 of the Wycomico County Code titled Personnel Rules. The acting county executive has requested for management to be able to make salary adjustments throughout the fiscal year without needing a budget amendment in certain situations. And Mr. Posoda and the Director of Finance have met with council's attorney, Mr. Bob Taylor, and they are working out some additional language to add to that bill. And they have requested for the voting on this bill to be extended. So this resolution before you tonight will extend the voting date to November the 17th. And per Charter Section 311, five members of the council must vote in the affirmative to extend this date.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 104-2020.
移到
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, Resolution Number 104-2020, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, I have six votes for aye, Ms. Harley.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 105-2020. This is approving and publishing the dates of the official holidays for county employees for the year 2021.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 105-2020.
移到
Got a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 105-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Harley, six votes.
The next item is Resolution Number 106-2020. This is approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2021 through 2026 consolidated transportation program. Council held a work session on this request on September the 15th, and I believe we have Mr. Mark Whitlock here, Deputy Director of Public Works, if there are any questions. And for the public's benefit, the council will be meeting with the Department of Transportation this evening at 7:00 PM.
Correct. Okay, need a resolution, a motion for Resolution Number 106-2020?
移到
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, Resolution Number 106-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, I have six votes. Thank you, Mr. Whitlock.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 107-2020. This is authorizing the acting county executive to accept a grant award from the Center for Tech and Civil Life in the amount of $67,158. The grant funds are to be used for the planning and operation of a safe and secure election in Wycomico County. And we have Ms. Deion Church here, Deputy Director of the Wycomico County Board of Elections, if there are any questions. And we do have updated grant agreement on the council table. My understanding is that the only change was that the cover letter is now addressed to the acting county executive.
Okay, I have a motion. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 107-2020.
移到
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Holloway?
I have a question.
Yes.
How are you this evening?
I'm good.
State your name for the record.
My name is Deion Church, Deputy Director of the Board of Elections.
I did have a question from a citizen that could not be here that wished to ask. Is there any obligation to furnish these individuals that are given this grant, any election data from Wycomico County?
Any obligation to furnish data?
To the group that's making the grant.
Nothing, other than what we provided initially when we applied for the grant. So the only thing, the data they needed was basically the number of registered voters, and we gave information from the county finance office as far as I W9 information. And that was pretty much, other than what we were interested in using the grant money for. But the only obligation I have to do at the end is report back what we used the grant money for and how much we used it.
Okay, I saw that in the application. That was a concern that I was, that a question was directed to me, so I appreciate you answering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Do we have more questions? Any more questions? Okay, all in favor, Resolution Number 107-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, Ms. Harley, six votes.
Next is discussion with Mr. Mark Whitlock, Deputy Director of Public Works, on the Morris Mill Dam Rehabilitation Project Funding.
Good evening. You can state your name for the record.
Mark Whitlock, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
What we had was an overage of approximately $250,000 on the Morris Mill Dam project. It came from basically what plagued the problem with the whole project all the way through was poor soils in the dam itself. Even after redesign, finding more problems after the fact, most of the overage came from basically replacing poorer soils so that the road could be built and the dam could be finished.
Mark, I got a quick question. The, I mean, some of those change orders were obviously pretty substantial, and I'm certainly making the assumption that, I mean, they're discussed and so forth. We just don't take them on the face value when, you know, we have a substantial change order that's in the, you know, I mean, some of these are $38,000 or $100,000. You know, those are pretty big numbers.
Yes.
So, so I mean, I'm assuming, or correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, assuming those are discussed, verified, and so forth, that, you know, to justify those changes.
Yes, it was discussed in the executive's office at the time, and there were things that were needed. After Dallas Baker left in March, I was given pretty clear direction that they wanted the job, they wanted the project finished. And in order to move forward, especially, the major problem with it was, was once the materials were put on the road and we were ready for paving, those would not compact. And the entire thing was pumping and rolling, and we had to remove that material and rebase that so that we knew we would have substantial base to put the blacktop back.
All right, thanks.
And that was the majority of it.
Any more discussion? Mr. Hastings?
Apologize if you've already said this, but is this the, is this the first, haven't we seen other requests for this particular project? Haven't we seen other overages?
This project actually had a redesign that was created by the poor soil conditions that the dam was originally built with. Even after that redesign, there are some things that you can't tell until you start to dig into it. And to give an example, where the overflow pipes were, they were approximately seven foot down. We had to excavate that hole seven foot and replace all that material, along with the four-foot layer across the entire top, just so we could have good support. Just enough to stabilize it so we could actually build the road back.
Is this the first overage we've had, or is this the?
This is, this is the first overage we had. We had, we had the original design and then a redesign. And then at the end, this is, the 250,000 was the overage.
I understand what you're saying, Josh. I mean, I think when I attended one of the first meetings in, okay, when I attended one of the first meetings in Frootland, when the architects came down and all that, this project was probably what, one and a half million maybe? And it's increased millions by now. This 250,000 is a drop in the bucket. I don't know how any project could have gotten, and this is no reflection on you at all, because you were nowhere near this. But I'm just amazed as to how many millions of dollars this project ended up costing from what it was supposed to be in day one.
And how long it took.
And how long it took. Yeah, how long it took.
And that was part of the problem, too. You know, the entire time that that project was being redesigned, that dam sat there open. It didn't have any blacktop on top of it, and it just saturated and saturated and saturated, which really just created a worse, it was just a worse scenario in the end to when you were trying to finish it up.
Yeah, it's, the 250 is unfortunate, but I think there's, I'm not sure how that gets away from us. I don't, you know, I don't know how you put your finger on it and say this should never have been done. I've been looking at the invoices that came with our briefbook, and I'm saying, well, there's no way I can review this. I can't micromanage what's in here and say, well, that was never supposed to be a charge. I just, I have no concept as to how you can control these types of expenses and even look at this company and go, it should be 250, it should be 100.
At the end of the day, the last three weeks, I pretty much lived there on that site to ensure that the contractor stayed on task and that things were getting done. and to ensure that the contractor stayed on task and that things were getting done according to completion, because they were drawing to the near, the end of the deadline that they had. And I think I missed it by two days at the end. But it is pretty tough when you're there on site. And of course, I have a long experience in construction, you know, through landfills or roads or whatever it is. And I know that there are some things, when I see certain things, certain occurrences that are happening, that they, that you can't build a road on top of that. And to try to build on top of that would have been, is a poor reflection on us as it would have been anything. You have to make it, you do it and you do it right the first time.
You feel very certain that this is the last, the last amount of funding that we're going to have to?
I believe that it would probably take the finger of God to wipe that dam off the face of the earth at this point. It's that solid. Yes.
Well, I know I had to go by there many times because I got a lot of calls from constituents around the area, and you got some of the same calls from the constituents. And they're very happy that the road's open. I know the fire department, the police department, sheriff's department, they're all happy that it's open. The town's happy.
And I will say, surprisingly to me, I'm not sure just what exactly feeds that pond, but that pond is full. It's in its structure, it's overflowing, it's doing everything it's supposed to do now.
And the last time I talked to you about it, it was in the process of filling up?
Yes. Which I thought it would take some time longer, but it filled up very quickly, actually.
That's good.
So, so as far as our look at this, this is our final bill. The pond is back, it's full, it's overflowing. The state of Maryland is happy with it, we're happy with it. So at this point, this is the project over.
Any more questions?
More question?
Yeah, Mr. Hastings.
Is there anything that we, any other lessons learned or any other thoughts as to how we prevent this kind of thing from happening in the future? I don't know if we have, you know, an engineering, who's our engineering lead on these kinds of projects? I know you're working with state and it maybe gets a little confusing. I'm glad you were able to be there for the last three weeks to help close it up. But who is the lead internally to make sure that this happens on time and on budget as much as possible?
Well, you know, Dallas Baker started out with it and oversaw it for the majority of it. He was accompanied by our own engineering staff.
Dallas was an engineer, is that correct?
Dallas was an engineer. He was a professional engineer. I do believe this though, is, is that when you're dealing with dams like this, as much as you are with Bering Creek or any other dam that you're going to come across, they're, they're going to be different because you have different soil types in different regions of the county. And those things are going to determine how much or how little you have to do in doing a project like this. I will say that good practice on the front side of this, bore samples that show a true reflection of the types of materials that you're dealing with before you put the shovel in the ground is good practice. And unfortunately for this particular project, and I'd never heard this before, I knew that the bore samples had been done straight across the road. Where normally if you're looking at a dam, you want to profile the material for the length of the dam. What it came back to was, and I had never heard this, was the original concept of this was a bridge. So the bore samples were taken where the landing of the bridge was. And then after that idea was scrapped, they tried to use what they had. And they tried to, you know, to manufacture and create something that would work for MDE and the state. And in the end of the day, it didn't really work. And that was, that was the, that was what we had to put up with.
And this project, you know, in all fairness, started well before Dallas ever, ever picked it on, yeah.
Yes, because even, even, I remember in Dallas's early days, I was in the meeting where we, we had the initial look at the design of the dam. And I'd never heard of a bridge before, so that had to be well before Dallas or even I had any knowledge of what was going on with it, so.
Any more questions?
Just a procedural point, Mr. Dodd. I think if this is going to be an amendment in this year's budget, that probably there needs to be an amendment of the CIP to put in funding as a capital item, because that's what this is. And rather than an amendment of last year's budget. And also, I think the council might want to look at how much is in the contingency from which the $250,000 will be taken to determine how much is left, just for general good practice. I don't know how much is in there now. Maybe Laura does, I don't know offhand.
Mr. President, we do have the Director of Finance here, and I have spoken to her as far as the procedural aspect of it. It will require a public hearing and an amendment to the capital budget. And we can have that on October the 20th at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
And did you want the Director of Finance to go over the contingency amount?
Does anyone want to hear from Ms. Olin?
I'd like to hear you, Ms. Olin.
Come on up, Ms. Olin.
I think she's chomping at the bit a little bit.
As she looked like, I was getting ready to say that.
I'd just like to think, to be glad that I'm prepared with this answer. So our original budget for the year was almost $1.4 million in contingency. We have done one amendment to that for the TGM contract, which was $50,000. Council approved that back end of August, beginning of September, I can't remember which meeting. With this 255, we'll have $1,077,000 remaining in contingency for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Anything else?
Are there any pending projects through the CIP that are requiring such transfers as opposed to the bonding, I use bonding loosely?
I am not aware of any at this moment. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that there aren't any, I just don't have any on the top of my head at this moment.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Ms. Olin. Thank you, Mr. Whitelock. Ms. Hurley, I don't think we've got time to start the next.
We cannot start until exactly 7:00 PM because it's an advertised discussion with the Maryland Department of Transportation. So next on the agenda, do you want to proceed with that?
We can start, we only have three minutes, but Mr., Steve, can you come up?
Okay, so next on the agenda is discussion on naming the Pirates War Boat Ramp in memory of the late Bob Culver. And Councilman Bill McCain requested this work session at the last council meeting and before you, as Mr. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism.
Mr. Miller, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, Steve Miller, I'm the Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism.
Okay. I guess we want to talk about where we go from here, how do we get this started? I want to thank Mr. McCain for the idea. I think it's a great idea, and I think it's great to honor the county executive. So what do you see as a procedure for us to go through with this?
No, I don't, I don't know honestly procedurally how that would happen. As far as the concept, I certainly appreciate Mr. McCain's suggestion. I have no issue with it. I think, I think in a lot of ways it makes sense. As far as the timing of the project, we're proceeding in the design phase right now. We'll be bidding out certain parts this winter and in the spring. I think the boat ramp will be towards the latter part of that, just because of permitting. So we're probably looking at probably the earliest next summer. So there is some time on that. But to me, it would be the will of the council and the county executive if they're to proceed. I have no objection.
Are you okay with that?
I have not, yeah, I have no objection at all.
Okay, any questions?
I guess in the end, is it just a simple resolution that we need to do?
I would highly recommend a resolution be approved by this council, authorizing that dedication.
We could have a resolution, and then we'll also have to have like a ribbon cutting date. So that would have to be part of the planning process as well.
Sure.
So, and you can be a part of that if you would like.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mr. McCain?
I don't know if we have signage, I don't know if there's any kind of, I don't know if that's, probably it doesn't cost that much or add it to a budget, but some sort of minor, you know, signage to have in there to recognize it would be nice, I think.
The county can make their own sign, but if we want something nicer, we probably sub that out. But maybe that'd be part of the planning process.
Yeah, I think, and then perhaps working with the family if there was some kind of inscription or some kind of dedication, we could certainly work with the council or whomever on that.
That'd be a good idea. Anything else? I think they're getting ready to start the next presentation. So we'll be in touch with you, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Steve, thanks for all the good work you're doing, and I've seen a lot of the publicity at the road he's been doing with the Seven and a Half Field. Fantastic, very good, and you deserve a lot of credit for moving that forward, so thank you.
Great work, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley?
I believe at 7:00, so next on the agenda is discussion with the Maryland Department of Transportation on their fiscal year 2021-2026 draft consolidated transportation program. We do have Secretary Gregory Slater attending remotely, as well as several of his team members. The public is also able to participate remotely. The WebX meeting link with the meeting ID and password, as well as the call-in telephone number, is located in the briefbook posted on the county's website. And there will be opportunity for comments at the end of the discussion. For the state delegation that is listening, the link that was originally posted in the Outlook calendar has been updated, so please check your emails for that updated link. At this time, we are going to ask for the public and those that are attending remotely to please place your phone or listening device on mute. This is a hybrid meeting, meaning that some people are attending in person and some people are attending remotely. So we also ask that you please state your name prior to speaking, so everyone knows who is talking. This includes council members, elected officials, Maryland Department of Transportation staff, meeting participants, and the public. If necessary, staff may request a presenter or speaker to restate your name or comment. Mr. President?
Okay, at this time I'd like to introduce Mr. Gregory Slater, our Secretary of the Maryland Department of Transportation. Secretary Slater, you now have the floor.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. First, good evening, county executive persona, members of the council, as well as members of the delegation on here. It's really great to be on here. It's great to see some faces, and I am hoping we can all get together in person soon. But first, I want to say thank you for inviting us to provide an overview of our draft six-year consolidated transportation program. This is the CTP that covers fiscal years 21 to 26. In an effort to practice social distancing and protect you, the residents of your county and our team, we're holding our CTP tours virtually for the first time this year. To follow along, please go to ctp.maryland.gov, and you can take a look at the CTP there. The first, next thing I'll do is introduce my team that's here with me today. I'm going to start with our State Highway Administration. We have a newly appointed State Highway Administrator, Tim Smith, and District Engineer, Jay Meredith. From the Maryland Transportation Authority, we have Planning and Program Development Director, Melissa Williams. From the Maryland Transit Administration, we have Local Transit Support Director, Travis Johnson. From the Motor Vehicle Administration, we have Administrator, Chrissy Neiser. And from the Maryland Aviation Administration, we have Executive Director, Ricky Smith, and Regional Aviation Assistance Director, Ashish Solanki. Also joining us from the secretary's office is our Regional Planner, Ian Bean, the Director of Government Affairs, Jeff Tozey, and our State Legislative Officer, Pilar Helm. I can tell you that I have worked with each one of these men and women in the course of my 20-plus years in this department, and they are as good as they come, and they are just a tremendous team. Just going through this program, let me start to say that I'm very familiar with the CTP tour process. After spending more than 20 years at SHA talking about highway projects in these small meetings, I remember doing my first CTP tour meeting as a new State Highway Planning Director in 2008. So I have a lot of history over the years as we worked together on these projects. We collaborated, we fought for some of the same things together, and we did get a lot done. So many of the priorities in local jurisdictions like yours, I've had the pleasure of working on from the very beginning, and I believe it gives me a very unique perspective coming into this job. I'm humbled to be addressing you for the first time as secretary in these historically challenging times, times when we're trying to keep our transportation network moving during this pandemic health crisis and this major economic downturn as a result of that. While I certainly have never envisioned serving as Transportation Secretary for a financial and health crisis, that experience has only reiterated for me how critical transportation is to the success of this state and keeping this state moving. Our transportation network has been critical to keeping the supply chain open and getting those essential workers to work during this pandemic. From day one, our goal has been very clear. We want to protect our employees and our customers, and we continue to work hard to keep people moving and safe across the system. This draft CTP will be key to not only how we navigate these reduced revenues, but make critical investments that will be at the core in helping us rebuild in this recovery. The draft CTP, I can assure you, is a direct result of some very tough decisions and a direct result of these drastic reductions in revenue from travel. Let me first walk you through some of the numbers on the travel side. When you compare 2020 to the same week in 2019, the second week of April, during the peak of the state home order, travel was at an all-time low, while the fourth week of September, beginning of October, is starting to show some trends of returning. Our highway volumes were down 52% in April, and they're now down 15%. They're coming back in different patterns. Our truck volumes were down 27% at the peak and now only 13%. Our toll transactions were down 57% at the peak and are now down 19%. Over at BWI Marshall Airport, our travel was down 95%, but we're now back at 66% and continuing to recover at a faster pace than some of our competing airports. Our transit system was down 60% or 70% at the peak overall and is now down 60%. Now, the real bright spot that we've seen is our Port of Baltimore, our monthly container counts at the Port of Baltimore were down 17% in the peak and just down 0.2% in August, and we're actually up in September. So the Port of Baltimore, the men and women that really work hard down there have been resilient and really tremendous in keeping this country or this state moving during this pandemic. But we're really set up well to deal with some of the issues that we're starting to see now. And we are continuing to track those positive trends. But while these numbers are starting to come back, the current six-year draft CTP estimates, the trust fund revenue declines across the border down from our gas tax to our titling revenues, as well as our operating revenues across the department. So this budget really reflects a lot of the tough decisions in every single business unit. Every department of MDA took a hit on the six-year capital budget for FY, and the FY21 operating budget, with a reduction of $1.9 billion in capital cuts and another $98 million in operating cuts. That really will be felt statewide. Every single cut we make weighed heavily on us as we focus on keeping this transportation network moving and safe for our customers and our employees. But what you're going to feel here on the eastern shore, some things on, on the aesthetic side and the project development side, you'll see some longer grass as we cut back on some of our milling cycles to save some money. You'll start to see impacts to our system reservation program and some of the conditions as we start to rebuild that budget. But our transportation vision hasn't changed. The parameters around us have changed and the dollar amounts are smaller, but the focus is still the same. Early this year, when I came in as Transportation Secretary, I laid out some really key initiatives, and those are still the same. We want to focus on delivering these big infrastructure projects that are important to the state. We want to integrate technology and flexibility and allow for future growth. We want to prioritize state of good repair of our system. We want to system a transportation system we can be proud of, and that's across all of our assets and modernizing. We want to provide safe and accessible mobility choices for all of our users, drivers, truck drivers, rail drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, and really looking at the interplay between transportation and land use as we're planning our system. And we're looking to establish a sustainable, customer-focused transportation visum that incorporates roadway, transit, freight, air, and port infrastructure. This vision is going to set the foundation for the development and evaluation program on the CTP that will be the foundation for the next generation. But it's going to take time. It's important to me that you know what our thought process is as we're building this recovery in this program. As we were dealing with the issues in fiscal year 21, we really took the time to pause, assess what was coming at us, and adjust where we could to make sure that we could limit the damage that was being done. In FY '22, that's the budget that you're starting to see now. This is about recovery and starting to plan for the future. And then fiscal year '23, it's about finalizing that recovery, but stabilizing the trust fund across the six years and across the department in a balanced transportation program. We're looking at a two-year recovery based on our economic models, and so we're really keeping our eye on that as we stabilize the trust fund for one that we keeping our eye on that as we stabilize the trust fund for one that we can be counted on, that one can be counted on for Marylanders. But this $13.4 billion budget, capital budget and $2.2 billion operating budget, we're very much focused on preserving what we have, planning for the future, and building in what we can to support Maryland's economic recovery. But the bottom line is this budget is pretty tough. You know, while M.D.O. is doing the best that we can with our state funding, we can't do it alone. I do want to take a minute and thank our federal delegation for that first round of CARES Act. It was tremendous for us, especially the influx of money that was coming into our transit systems, as well as our aviation department, really saved us in FY21. But while these revenues are declining, we have to continue to work with our federal delegation to what's next. And so, working together at really every level of government as we work in this recovery, and that's going to be important for us. As we move into the vision for the next wave of transportation over Maryland, it's important that we work together and set the foundation for how we can not only weather this pandemic, but grow and set the foundation for our children. But in closing, I do want to announce some of the key preserved projects in the secretary's office budget. Our Bike Ways Grant Program was made possible through our M.D.O. Kim Lamphier's Bike Way Network Program. Some of you may not be familiar with Kim, but she was a fierce advocate for bicycle funding, and we thought it was really important. We worked with members of the General Assembly and really renamed that program after her, and I think it's a fitting tribute to her. In September, we announced $3.78 million in fiscal year 21 grants to support bike safety and access improvements for projects across the state, and that included two grants for the city of Salisbury. It was a $125,000 grant.
Hey, Ms. Harley. Who's supposed to fix that?
$9,000 grant for West College Avenue Bike Facility to design that dedicated cycle track and Bike Boulevard Greenway along West College Avenue to connect Salisbury University to the Camden Avenue and Riverside Drive Bike Facilities. Two really important projects that are an important part of that next foundation. You know, we're going to be highlighting some of these grants and other, some of these bike and pedestrian initiatives in our new Walk Cycle Maryland Twitter and Facebook pages. I encourage you to watch those. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our Moodle Administrator, starting with the State Highway Administration with Tim Smith.
Good evening, County Council members. Can everyone hear me all right? Thumbs up?
Yes.
All right, great. As Secretary Slater said, I'm Tim Smith. It's an honor to be here and a privilege to lead the State Highway Team. It might be just my personal belief, but I think M.D.O. and State Highway tends to really shine when there's emergencies, whether that's weather event or winter event or whether it's an incident on the roadway. And I really feel like the whole COVID-19 2020 situation, it was no exception. So, our primary goal was keeping our customers and our employees safe while we delivered our core functions. We advanced projects while practicing physical distancing, following proper health practices, meeting virtually, and using appropriate protective equipment. As the secretary mentioned, as traffic dipped below 50% of our typical volumes, our maintenance crews switched to alternating shifts to kind of reduce the number of workers we had in one location at any one time. That allowed us to keep them safe, but also continue to keep maintenance activities going with a lighter workload. Then, once as traffic slowly kind of came back and reached closer to expected volumes, our maintenance crews returned to full staff shortly in July or in early July with additional health protocols. So, for our construction efforts, fewer vehicles earlier this year really allowed us to expand our lane closures, and we can make better progress without impacting mobility of our customers. So, this allowed us to speed up the pace of a few projects and other cases allowed us to recover from ones that might need a little help. As the secretary mentioned, there's been budget impacts, and State Highway kind of stayed true, and we focused on continuing our maintenance and construction activities. But as a result, that meant some projects were going to have to be delayed, certain phases of it from a planning and design perspective. And also, we tended to focus our available operating resources on safety and mobility of our system, so that has resulted in fewer milling cycles and less litter pickup, and we have been getting that feedback from our customers. But the good part about supporting our active construction program was we were able to deliver some great projects with new infrastructure for Maryland. So, a couple of great examples here in Kamiko County are outside of Salisbury, last fall, we completed our $3 million signalization and intersection improvement on US 50 at Whitelove Road. And while we're still working on it, we're right there in Salisbury, we're in the process of working on a $9 million project to upgrade drainage along Salisbury Boulevard, and we're hoping to wrap that up before the end of the year. And this past summer, State Highway completed a $900,000 project to paint seven bridges along US 113, extending the life of those structures back to Greg's state-of-good-repair thoughts. So, indulge me for a minute as I want to talk a little bit about safety. As we've seen the traffic decrease, we have not seen a decrease in the kind of the magnitude of the crashes we're seeing, and that one, I wanted to bring up just kind of work zone safety and Maryland's moveover laws just as an emphasis point, because even as traffic was down, speeds were up, and we had a lot of our equipment, even members of our team struck while assisting disabled motorists performing construction and maintenance activities. So, the worst-case scenario was in early July, we had one of our contracting partners had an employee struck and they lost their life. So, I'm just encouraging you as through your daily efforts with education and laws to protect our workers so they can return home each night, and we can continue to deliver great projects. So, in closing, as Greg mentioned, we are actively working on trying to plan and stabilize for our financial future, and what that really means for state highways is three main areas, and that's asset management, accessibility, and mobility. From an asset management perspective, that's using a system preservation philosophy to get long-term gain on our day-to-day decisions, but also seeking to get the best return on investment on all our transportation infrastructure for the next generation. Accessibility has a huge safety component to it, but it's also about consideration for all users of our system. So, whether that's bike, ped, pedestrians, scooters, vehicles, they all need appropriate access to life opportunities. So, we really feel like the context guide we've developed and the way we are weaving in a Vision Zero philosophy will aid in us making roadway safer for everyone. Mobility is about taking advantage of the technology and data to make better decisions with our existing footprint. So, we're looking at ways we can incorporate data, smart devices, and technology to make more efficient use and deliver greater projects in the future. So, I thank you for your time. I will turn it over to our M.D.O. teammate at the Transportation Authority, Melissa Williams.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Again, my name is Melissa Williams. I'm the Director of Planning and Program Development at the Transportation Authority. MDTA has maintained operations, completed Bay Bridge projects, and advanced other initiatives during COVID-19. With reduced revenues, we changed some operations and delayed some work. All electronic or cashless tolling was implemented statewide on March 17th to limit contact for both the traveling public and the MDTA toll collectors. After closing in March, we reopened the Easy Pass Customer Service Centers on June 15th with limited capacity and safety precautions in place. Some key MDTA accomplishments during COVID-19 include completing work to reopen the Bay Bridge westbound right lane, install a new tolling gantry, and deliver full-time all-electronic tolling in advance of our summer goal. We advanced major bridge projects, including the I-895 Bridge Project in Baltimore and the new Nice-Middleton Bridge in southern Maryland. We worked to develop Drive Easy MD Toll Modernization, which includes new payment options such as pay-by-plate and early payment notice of toll due discount. A new website will go live later this year, and we reduced civil penalties from $50 to $25 for toll violations. Additional features include new vehicle toll classifications with lower toll rates, which will roll out in phases once the new tolling system goes live. Reductions to the MDTA budget due to COVID means projects need to be deferred. The I-95 Express Toll Lanes Project has been deferred by one year, and cash flows for the Nice-Middleton Bridge replacement have been reduced in the draft fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 26 CTP. This project completed more work in fiscal year 20 than originally forecasted. Therefore, the overall budget for the project has not changed. MDTA major projects preserved include the Bay Crossing Tier One NEPA Study. We anticipate publishing the Tier One Draft Environmental Impact Statement and identifying MDTA's Recommended Preferred Corridor Alternative in the fall of 2020 and holding public hearings in early 2021. Tier One Final Environmental Impact Statement and Record of Decision is scheduled for 2021. If you would like more information about this project, please visit baycrossingstudy.com. Bay Bridge ongoing and future work includes the westbound deck rehabilitation of the center and left lanes. This work includes deck sealing, steel railing replacement, and deck joint repairs and replacements. Steel plates placed in the center and left lanes, also replacing overhead signal gantries on the westbound span. The expected completion is in 2021. The new Bay Bridge crossover automated lane closure system will allow maintenance crews to implement and discontinue two-way traffic operations at the bridge more safely and more quickly. The automated lane closure system includes impavement lighting, automated gates, dynamic message signs, and overhead lane use signals. Project work such as conduit boring and installation has begun on the eastern shore. In the fall of 2022, when two-way or lane closures on either bridge are in place, travelers will begin the transition to using the new lane closure system with gates and dynamic messaging signs as they get on or off of the Bay Bridge on the eastern shore. The existing cone and barrel system will remain in place on the western shore. In 2023, travelers will begin the transition to the new lane closure system on the western shore, and the cone and barrel system will no longer be used on either side of the Bay Bridge. The western shore automated lane closure system will be constructed under a separate contract with notice to proceed, expected in the summer of 2021. Contract awarded for the eastbound deck rehabilitation, design, engineering, and other preconstruction activities is expected later this year. Thank you very much, and I'd like to turn it over to Travis Johnson at MTA.
Thank you, Melissa, and good evening, everyone. M.MTA operates local bus and commuter bus networks, Light Rail Link, Metro Subway Link, Mark Train Service, a mobility para-transit system, and supports locally operated transit systems statewide. Unfortunately, COVID-19 resulted in a major decline in Marylanders' use of transportation services across the state. However, we have made some key accomplishments during this time. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, Tri-County Council of the Lower Eastern Shore will receive $6.5 million in federal CARES Act funds to support your transit operations and/or capital needs of the counties as provided by Shore Transit. Reductions to the Transportation Trust Fund due to COVID-19 means transit operations need to be cut back. Due to the sharp decline in transportation revenues, state matching funds for local transit projects are not available in this year's CTP. However, M.MTA will be coordinating closely with all local transit operators to discuss the availability of local matching funds and to apply CARES funds and other available federal funding to help support critical local transit needs. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on one of M.MTA's key initiatives. We are currently undertaking a 50-year statewide transit plan, and we look forward to working with Wacomico County and other stakeholders across the state to develop this long-term vision and framework for a coordinated transit system statewide in Maryland. So, with that, thank you, and I will now turn it over to Chrissy Neiser at MVA.
Thank you, Travis. It's certainly a pleasure to be with you today. Can everybody hear me okay?
Good.
At M.MVA, we are focused on continuing to provide premier customer service even during these challenging times. Despite the fact that we had to close our branch offices, obviously due to public safety, our employees were still busy behind the scenes producing the products that folks were requesting either by mail or online or at our self-service kiosks. We also thought it was really important to support our commercial drivers, license holders, because they obviously were key to keeping the supply chain moving. So, during that time, we established an email address and phone number that they could reach out to us directly for services. We also regularly opened our branch offices throughout the state to test drivers and also worked with some of our large employers to bring our mobile bus to their facility to make sure testing options were available for new drivers that they were trying to bring onboard. We also processed more than 740,000 transactions during the time our branch offices were closed for the emergency. It's pretty impressive how much we were able to do. We're also really proud that we worked with several state agencies, including the Department of Health, the Maryland State Police, State Highway Administration, and local health departments to provide COVID-19 testing, obviously a critical service at some of our beep stations statewide. So, it was a good partnership. Our branch offices began to reopen on June 17th by appointment only, and the remaining offices opened on July 20th. Again, we remain appointment only, so we can control the number of people in our facilities. The new safety protocols that we implemented, obviously, everybody is wearing a mask when they enter the facility. You will find that you'll be asked a few health screening questions, as well as have your temperature checked before you enter the building. We do have Plexiglas installed at our customer counters to protect both our customers as well as our employees. You'll find social distancing stickers both inside and out to remind everybody about keeping that appropriate distance. And we've also made modifications to some of our key programs. For the first time, driver education, traditionally done in the classroom, has now been done online. That was to enable new drivers again to be able to safely get that license. And then, when they come to the MVA to get their driving test on, the test is now on the course with the examiner outside the vehicle scoring that test. So, again, all about the safety of the applicant as well as our customers. We also just rolled out a new tool that we're proud of called First Stop. It enables the customer to enter their driver's license or vehicle information and find out personalized services that they can do with MVA online. So, again, it's all about getting customers to think first about what they can do online, that they don't necessarily need to come to a branch office, but if they do, we will be happy to serve them with an appointment. We're also really proud of deploying a first phase of our IT modernization called Customer Connect in July of this year. It's obviously this very significant step forward in how we deliver our services for customers. This particular rollout covered our vehicle transactions, business licensing service, and our motor carrier services. It allows us to streamline transactions and also to continue to push out more online services. So, just a few of the things we've been able to push out since we went live. You can now enter your insurance information online. You can provide documentation. You can pay an insurance case. You can also order a disability placard or plate online. Your doctor can sign off on that, and you can get that ordered without ever coming to a branch office at all to get that product. Also, one of the transactions that customers tend to find a little more complicated is when you're titling a new vehicle. We now have a pre-application process that you start from your home on the computer. It walks you through everything you need. That way, you know you have all the documents that are required. It even gives you an approximate fee, and that'll shorten your time when you do come to the MVA for that transaction because you've already pre-populated much of the information. So, again, all of these things are about making it more convenient and efficient for our customers, and we'll continue forward with that. As Secretary Slater mentioned, obviously, the revenue impacts did impact all the agencies and our operations. From MVA, it meant postponing some smaller IT projects, as well as some of our branch renovation efforts. But despite those challenges, we are really excited to be moving forward with Phase Two of Customer Connect, and that will be our driver licensing services, so that will go live in December of 2021. Having that fully deployed will allow us to have that one single customer portal that we can see all the information about a customer, and they can find out information about all their MVA services in one place. We're really excited about that, as well as the security that comes with the new system. Another major effort has been our Real ID implementation. That deadline was pushed back by the federal government for obvious reasons, and so it is now October 1 of 2021. That extension allows over 300,000 Marylanders to get their Real ID during the normal renewal cycle, which is great. They don't have to make a special trip. The good news is Maryland's doing really well. Even though the deadline's been pushed back, we're over 70% compliant, and that compares with a percentage the DHS announced last month nationwide of about 38%. So, we're doing very well in terms of making sure folks are compliant. We also continue to work with our federal, state, and local partners on highway safety-related issues. Governor Hogan announced more than $40,000 for county agencies to help address highway safety. safety. And this month, the Highway Safety Office launched the Be the Driver campaign, and that campaign's really all about what you, as a driver, can do to make sure you're demonstrating safe behavior on the roadways and help us save lives. It's all focused on our Strategic Highway Safety Plan, which we're in the process of updating for 2021 to 2025. That will be built on the foundation of Vision Zero, which is obviously our statewide goal by 2030. We encourage all the counties to adopt plans because we know the needs at the county level are unique and individual. We know that the city of Salisbury did implement a Vision Zero action plan. We're really proud to support them in that effort, and certainly, we would be happy to provide any assistance to you as well if you wanted to move forward adopting a county plan. We're committed to continuing to find solutions, whether it's in highway safety or customer service, that bring the very best to our customers and your constituents. So I thank you for your time this evening, and with that, I will turn it over to Ricky Smith, the Executive Director of the Maryland Aviation Administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chrissy. Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me clearly. To like airports across the nation, BWI Marshall Airport has seen reduced passenger and airline activity since the early spring. While passenger traffic remained well below a typical summer, BWI Marshall has experienced some improving numbers in recent weeks. April, for example, was the low point for passenger traffic, with passenger traffic dropping 96%. But we did see some airline and passenger traffic return over the summer. For July, BWI Marshall passenger traffic was 51% of the entire Washington area market. For the second straight month, the total at BWI Marshall was more than Reagan National and Dulles airports combined. For the Labor Day weekend, TSA performed 15,125 screenings in just one day at our checkpoints. This was the highest count in nearly six months. The aviation industry expects a two- to three-year period before we regain pre-COVID levels. However, BWI Marshall remains well positioned for when the industry begins its true recovery. At the same time, BWI Marshall has continued to see increase in cargo activity. Amazon's occupancy in their new 200,000-square-foot aviation processing facility has been a bright light during this COVID period because they've seen enormous growth. I must acknowledge our staff and partners for working so hard throughout this pandemic to maintain critical operations on behalf of our airports. Just as Secretary Slater and my other colleagues stated, we've never been more prouder of our team members as they've worked very hard and courageously and resilience and reliability through this challenging period of time, and we cannot commend or applaud them enough. We continue to utilize enhanced cleaning and sanitation procedures to help ensure a safe and healthy airport for customers and employees. The airport, TSA, and our airline partners install protective shields at document checking stations, ticket counters, and information desks. We've also provided hand sanitizer stations throughout the terminal building as well as our rental car facility. Passengers and employees are required to wear masks and face coverings when they're in the terminal facility or the rental car facility per an executive order issued by Governor Hogan a couple months ago. We acted swiftly in the spring to provide rent relief to airlines and concessions in order to maintain customer amenities and jobs. Currently, about 52% of our food and retail concessions are open to serve travelers. The Federal Cares Act allocated $87 million to BWI Marshall and Martin State Airports for our operations efforts to help to offset revenue loss. Moving on to the CTP, the draft CTP reflects a temporary pause on some major work for BWI Marshall primarily related to expansive Concourse A B connector and baggage handling system project. That construction work was originally planned to start over the summer. However, it was slowed while the industry continues to recover. This large-scale project will support further domestic and international growth from Southwest Airlines, our hub carrier, the largest airline partner at BWI Marshall. This project will be largely funded by airport revenue bonds. That work is paused until the market for these bonds is stabilized. Moving on to some projects that we were able to preserve, a number of these key projects that are reflected in the CTP. We continue to do important work to meet near-term needs particularly related to safety. M.MAA will continue to support and foster aviation across Maryland by working with our 35 public-use airports in the state. For fiscal year 2021, M.MAA intends to provide $2.35 million in state support for regional airports across Maryland. We want to thank Secretary Slater because this comes directly out of the Transportation Secretary's budget. Salisbury Regional Airport will receive $215,000 in state aviation grant assistance for an aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle. And the airport has received a 100% FY 2021 federal grant assistance of $1.1 million for taxiway rehabilitation work. There are several airfield projects at BWI that will move forward, including a major reconstruction of Taxiway T, which is a primary aircraft circulation route around the terminal. This project will be fully funded by the federal government with more than $11 million in CARES Act funds. The five-gate extension of Concourse A is nearing completion. Our work is basically done. However, three new food and retail concessions are continuing to build out their operation. We continue to work with the FAA on extensive environmental assessment process for the next phase of improvements at BWI Marshall and Martin State Airport. We're finalizing the design process for a major terminal restroom renovation program, and we expect to begin construction in 2021. Second to Starbucks, restrooms is the biggest complaint airports get whenever we don't have them in ripeds. Replacement snow removal equipment and airfield vehicles will continue. So, as we know, the global airline and passenger traffic will rebound. We're very confident that it will happen. Across M.MAA, we're working to be prepared when the industry recovers. With that, I will turn it back over to Secretary Slater, and I want to thank you again for letting me speak today.
Thank you so much, Ricky, and thank you to the whole team. I just want to take a minute and thank everyone for their time tonight to talk about our six-year budget. Now, I'd like to turn it back over to County Executive Posoda, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't think County Executive Posoda is here, but I'll take over. Thank you, Secretary Slater. At this time, we're going to accept comments for the Maryland Department of Transportation representatives, starting with council members first, then public comments from the state delegation, followed by any comments from the public. Please state your name prior to speaking so everyone, including those attending remotely, know who is speaking. If you are attending remotely and want to ask a question or provide a comment, please use the raise hand feature located on the lower right side of your screen. If you are calling into the meeting...
Sir, sir, I think you're muted.
I'm not muted, not here. Maybe on the computer. Okay, stand by a second. I wonder who did that. Can you hear me now? Thank you, Secretary Slater. We didn't know it was muted. Starting over about the comments, we're going to now accept comments for the Maryland Department of Transportation representatives, starting with council members first, then comments from the state delegation, followed by any comments from the public. Please state your name prior to speaking so that everyone, including those attending remotely, know who is speaking. If you are attending remotely and want to ask a question or provide a comment, please use the raise hand feature located on the lower right side of your screen. If you are calling into the meeting, use star three to raise or lower your hand. You will then be called in the order in which the hand was raised. Please remember to lower the hand after your questions or comment has been stated. Now, first, we're going to start with council comments. Are there any council comments? Vice President Cannon.
Yes, hi. Good evening. This is John Cannon. First of all, I appreciate you being here tonight and taking the time to be here, Secretary Slater, and everyone else in addition. We are in receipt of your primary development program, and we appreciate that. We recognize that part of that is bridge work, resurfacing, and some drainage improvements. We would also like to let you know that tonight, we approved our priority letter, so you will be receiving that very soon, in that, of course, I think we're always trying to make improvements on our airport, which is very important to the county, and we are making huge improvements to the airport. So we appreciate all the help you've given us in the past. I know the weigh station is also on our letter as one of those priorities, as well as bypass feasibility studies. That's part of some of the county's requests. You'll also see many requests by the municipalities as well. So we only ask that you continue to give that your consideration, and we do recognize your funding restraints. But all that being said, you should be receiving that very soon, and we certainly do appreciate having the opportunity to meet with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cannon. Any more comments? Councilman Holloway.
Now, Secretary Slater, one of the things we heard tonight multiple times was the revenues. Questions have been asked of me in conversations. There's a lot of electric cars on the road today, and of course, none of them pay gas tax because they're not buying gas. So is there anything going to be done in the future as far as to get revenues from the electric cars that's being driven on the state highways today?
I'd like to start me off with an easy one, but that's been a little bit of a national discussion. So there's a, as we're set up in a funding mechanism for the fuel tax, of course, those vehicles are paying titling taxes and those types of fees. But as cars get more and more fuel-efficient and as more hybrid electric vehicles are introduced to the fleet, of course, that means less sales and gas tax and less revenue coming into the system. There are a number of different models that different parts of the country are looking at, whether it's mileage-based or things like that. We're not quite sure what's going to work for Maryland. What works in one part of the country may not work for us, but it's certainly a problem that is on our mind. It's a little bit of a double-edged there. I think it's great that cars are getting more and more fuel-efficient and less carbon footprint that's coming, but we do have a revenue issue to kind of tackle on the other side of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holloway. Are there any more questions? Councilman Hastings, did you have a question? I saw you doing a lot of writing. I didn't know you were taking notes for it.
Thank you.
Mr. McCain?
Good.
Mr. Davis? Okay, that's all we have. I don't know if Mr. Posoda is in the room or not. You mentioned him, but I don't see his face. This is Council President Dodd, but he may be watching in another room, but I don't see him in here. But anyway, I want to thank you, Secretary Slater, and your staff. I wrote down all of their names, and like other council members, I took notes. Can you hear me? I went mute on you. I took notes, and I was glad to hear the mention of the drainage work doing on South Salisbury Boulevard and that it'll come to an end soon, so I did like hearing that. Recently, a lot of us seen Route 13 North being resurfaced, and I think that's done, and that looks good. And I see some bridge work that you've got done, and several people mentioned highway safety, and I think that's very important because we have a lot of state employee workers out there, a lot of county employees on the highway, as well as police officers, firefighters, and paramedics, and they get injured and killed as well. So I'm glad that the state is focusing on highway safety. So with that said, I would like to thank you for your time tonight and look forward... I take that back. We have council comments after this, or public comments. I was ready to send you off. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Mr. President, before you proceed to public comments, would you want to take comments from the state delegation? I believe we do have some.
Do we have some? I didn't see any here. Are they online?
We do have some senators and delegates participating remotely.
Have they raised their hand?
Lynn, do we have any of the state delegation?
There's Senator Eckhart. She's muted.
Having this meeting today, am I in?
Same thing happening to us.
Senator, if you can just give us...
Is there somebody controlling it?
Oh.
Yes.
I think you're okay now.
No, I'm not.
We can hear you on this end.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry. Mine has mute, so I'll let you all do the controls. I'll stay out of the way. Anyway, thank you, Secretary, for being here and for your team. Thanks for all the improvements on the Bay Bridge. It's been... I haven't been over the Bay Bridge a lot since we came back from session, but it looks good, and for your commitment to our airport there at Salisbury-Wacomico, and that is so very important, and that's laying the groundwork for where we will be in the future. So I know it's been difficult with the lack of cars on the road with the Transportation Trust Fund, and I know we're going to be having a lot of discussion about that and budget tax this year, I'm sure, but I continue to appreciate the faithfulness of your team, and kudos to Jay Meredith. You're our district engineer who's always responsive to us. So thanks so much to everybody for their good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator.
Ms. Sand, do we have any more delegates or senators online? Do we have anyone else online?
This is Chris Adams. Can you hear me?
Yes, Delegate Adams. Go ahead, please.
Great. I wanted to take a minute also and echo Senator Eckhart's comments and thank MMA for what they're doing, certainly during difficult times. I did have a question. Is it related to the Bay Bridge? And maybe you talked about it, I just didn't catch it. But what's the status of the additional span crossing the Bay Bridge? This is always something of interest to us on the eastern shore, and I'm sure it'll come across when we have meetings, certainly in Talbot and Dorchester, but just thought I'd get your input on that so I could have a heads-up as to what's happening with the potential third span across the Bay Bridge or the Chesapeake Bay.
Absolutely, Senator or Delegate. Thank you so much. Let me first say, we got a lot of the existing work on the Bay Bridge completed. We have a couple of steel plates. We're trying to finish up on some joints, but let me ask Melissa Williams to give an update as we're moving through the planning process on that Bay Bridge. And so it's really starting to get to a point where we're going to be out in the public with some more information as we're really finishing up some analysis. Melissa, you there?
I am.
Great.
Okay. So for the Bay Crossing Tier One NEPA study, we anticipate publishing our Tier One, the Draft Environmental Impact Statement, in which we will identify MDTA's recommended preferred corridor alternative in the fall of 2020. So that's coming up very soon, and we'll be holding public hearings in early 2021. So again, stay tuned. We will be coming out to the public shortly. The project will be wrapping up with the final environmental impact statement and a record of decision, which is scheduled for 2021.
So Delegate, it's important to note there, in those tiered NEPA processes, there are VRL processes, that's first tier, all it will do is identify a corridor and work through the configurations in later phases.
Okay, so we're still a long ways away, and we... Let me ask a second question. It goes to, and this is my last one, it goes to Jay Meredith, who, again, Senator Eckhart I'll just echo her comments. He does a great job and, as always, very responsive. My side of the county, I represent the West Wacomico, Old Railroad Road is a conversation that I'd like to get some thoughts, and maybe we can't get those format here, but how we're going to look at that down the road. I've noticed that the amount of traffic that crosses there has increased significantly, especially as we've limited access... access, you know, crossing Route 50 and other areas from like Hebron to, you know, through Arald Springs. So, just wanted to get some thoughts on that. This might not be the right format because I really don't see Jay Meredith here on the the call. But normally during these meetings, these type of conversations do come up. If if for no other reason than Secretary Slater, I'm kind of raising my hand and saying maybe we can follow up in the near future and maybe visit this particular location. It's important. It's important to my constituents on, you know, the Hebron side of Route 50 as they're trying to get westbound onto Route 50. But I also recognize this is a increasingly busy, and I see it firsthand because I use it regularly, intersection, and it's one of interest. So, that was my only other question. Thanks. Thank you, Council President, for giving me a chance to get a couple.
Absolutely, Delegate. I'm happy to do both. So, I do think Jay is on here, so he might be able to kind of follow up a little bit. But I'm also happy to put it on my radar as well and kind of spend some time down there and visit with you. Just by way, I have a I have a college student, sophomore in college, who is in a remote environment, decided she was just going to stay at the beach and do her college. So, I go down there usually on Thursday nights, and I come back through on Monday morning. So, I'm happy to make a stop. But Jay, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Ken, Jay?
Okay. Delegate Adams, appreciate the question. So, you and I have had the discussion about that crossover a few times, and I certainly recognize the importance that it is to the public in in your area. So, with that job, we had it under design. We were looking at some acceleration lanes at that crossover and some other improvements. Unfortunately, with the funding prices that we're in, we had to put it on hold. But soon as we get back to the normalcy, that project is one of our top priorities.
That's good.
Okay. I believe Delegate Johnny Mouts wanted to speak next.
Okay, Delegate Mouts.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity. It's great to be with everyone. I just want to take a second to thank, well, thanks Administrator Nizer and everybody at MVA for the job that they're doing, getting the trying to get to be available to get individual issues resolved in a limited capacity. You know, right now, there are people are still at work. A lot of people never stopped working. The government did shut down, and it did reopen, and they've just done a great job helping me help constituents. I don't have a whole lot to add. I have a bunch of questions. I just want to just reiterate the importance that just to remember that, you know, there's a a big part of the population didn't stop. They're still working, and they need access to to a lot of government services that are necessary. And a lot of those are licenses and things like that that come through the Department of Transportation. So, everything and anything that we can do to support their efforts in trying to get the their offices open and running, I applaud it. I support it. And if there's anything I can do to help you, please let me know. So, and thanks to the whole team for for getting for doing everything they can to to get to get these offices open again.
Delegate Mouts, thank you for raising that. I know the whole MVA team has done an amazing job, and I can't say enough about the men and women over at the MVA across the state that frankly didn't stop working either. Where, you know, we were shut down for a little while, working behind the scenes, but we've been opening back up slowly in an appointment-only type of an environment. And I know Chrissy does a great job at kind of staying connected with them and helping us resolve these issues and really providing the type of leadership that we need in in that type of an environment. But but from top to bottom, they've been amazing.
Ms. Sand, is there anyone else online? Ms. And? I hear there was somebody else online.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to at least make it known that appreciative of Secretary Slater for being here with us tonight. Really beneficial to hear the funds that have come down to support this Salisbury as well as other parts of Y Comico County. I do know the legislature, we were quite concerned about the transportation funds as related to the gasoline tax and with the pandemic affecting, a lot of the revenue that we had anticipated is not coming through. So, I didn't have a question. But again, I just wanted to say thank you to you and all your staff for all that you have done, and we're going to continue to work through this as we navigate towards session.
So much. I make myself available whenever we need it. That's how we're going to have to get through it.
Secretary Slater, Delegate Otto here. We talked this afternoon, and it's good to see you tonight. I didn't see you this afternoon, but we had a good conversation, and my positions haven't changed, and you did a good job tonight. And I thank you for being a part of this, and certainly the transportation in Y Comico County is very important to my district as well as the region. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Sand, is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else? I think that's all of the delegates that wanted to speak. Do we do have a couple members of the public that wanted to make comments?
Okay, if they want to make comments pertaining to transportation, the transportation
Okay. Okay. So, the person whose number ends with 31 can now speak?
Yes, it's actually Delegate Hartman.
Delegate Hartman.
Can you hear me okay? I'm getting some backbeat. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you. I can hear you, Delegate.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone. I won't go into names. It's it's just great to have these annual updates. Jay Meredith, I will I will name particularly whenever we call her. Everyone else said so responsive, just unbelievably quick. Appreciate it much. Hopefully, this is the only year that we have these these DALLAN meetings. It's so much better to meet in person. Do have a question. Pre-COVID, do we have any ideas to the decrease in revenue from from fuel tax that we've been experiencing, say, like over the last five years?
You know, the 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 revenue itself, so, you know, we were our program pre-COVID was pretty lean in the out years, but it was how the money was in the front side of the program. But in terms of the the revenue itself from the gas tax, you know, what we were finding was it was pretty flat. What we were finding is that people were driving more at the same time that they were buying less gas. So, it was kind of evening out. So, the revenues were were pretty much flat. But what we were looking at was a situation where we're feeling it as a decline because the cost of our services, the cost of construction, the cost of maintaining the the system was getting more expensive while our revenues were becoming flat.
Okay, the, you know, when we're talking about revenue, one area, it may sound kind of strange to think that we actually lower fees in some areas. I don't know how many people noticed the number of Maine trailer tags. And it's it's so the the price to register a trailer in Maine, there's so much difference between Maryland and Maine. People in Maine actually have a business of utilizing their address for the purpose of registering trailers in Maine. Maryland is losing out on a ton of revenue. Those those trailers are on our road. This is a situation where if we actually lower our fees, have more trailers being registered than Maryland to be competitive with Maine, I actually think we would see an increase in revenue. So, I don't know, you know, where where we start that process even looking at it. But the number of Maine trailer tags, it's frustrating to me. I see it so frequently, and I'm sure, you know, once I mention it, you'll start noticing it. Every trailer you see has a Maine tag, and we really need to fix that situation to get that revenue back here in Maryland.
Happy to take a look at that, Delegate. Happy to investigate that a little bit. Now, you're right, though. Once you once you mention that, I'll start to notice it. But happy to take a look at that with you.
Thank you.
And Secretary Slater, I'll just add that we do. We have done some research on this issue because it is something that's frequently, actually, this delegation in particular has brought the issue to us. And Maine, you're exactly right. Delegate Maine has created a essentially marketing campaign for folks to register trailers. They allow you to do it online, so you don't have to come in person. So, you don't have to worry about the physical traveling distance. And it's not just the registration fees. They don't have the same safety inspection requirements that we have. So, it's a we have a whole chart that kind of breaks down each of the various fees and where Maine is and where we are, because this is a question we get frequently. So, it's it's really a whole mentality about titling these trailers, and and they've really decided to to make it, you know, an attractive thing for folks to do, unfortunately, and it results in in those being registered out of state. And really, not much at this point that we can do to enforce that. But they've been made a decision many years ago to do that. And the same thing happens in other states where they see these Maine trailers as well. But happy to share that additional information with you.
Well, I'm not saying that we need to, you know, fight it. I'm saying we need to join it, and I'm saying we need to lower our fees so that we can be competitive. I think there's a case where if we actually lower fees, we'll see increased revenue. It's, you know, I don't know what other delegates are on here that that pay attention to that. But it's it's I think there are almost as many trailers on the road from Maine that there are in Maryland. It's it's very, very evident down here on the shore. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Hartman. Ms. Sand, is there anyone else online?
Um, no, there's no one else requesting to speak.
Did you say no?
No one else.
Okay.
Nobody else has requested to speak.
I didn't understand.
I think she said no one has requested to speak.
Okay. With that said, I'd like to thank Secretary Slater and his staff from the Department of Transportation for their time. I also want to thank Senator Eckhart, Delegate Adams, Delegate Mouts, Delegate Hughes, Delegate Otto, and Delegate Hartman. I know the constituents really appreciate your concern for their issues and questions. So, thank you, Secretary Slater and your staff.
Thank you so much for having us. I look forward to seeing you all in person one day soon.
Thank you. Stay safe.